All right, good morning, everybody. This is our regularly, or sort of regularly scheduled work session moved from Monday to Tuesday, the sixth. And my computer's being weird. It just kicked me off again, Greg. So, and I don't have any other agenda. Give your agenda, Andy Barber.
Is this mine?
This is for the special work session. Okay, there we go. First item is Chapeeta Signalization Project Construction, and this is City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's no action surrounding this item, but it's mostly just to get you guys up to speed on what and where and how and when and all that, to talk through the Chapeeta Signalization Project. So, if you remember back in 2021, this was initially in response, or what kind of brought all this to the surface was the Hubbard-Montrose Crossing project that was going in, brought up a lot of discussions about traffic and the signalization of Chapeeta. Even without that project, it turns out, the warrants for the signal at that intersection are met. And so through that, we had worked with the county last, or in the spring of '21, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement where we split the cost for that signal. So based on the anticipated traffic loading being about forty percent associated with city subdivisions, sixty percent associated with county traffic, that's the split on the project. We then went forward on design in partnership with the county. Because they're the majority, they were the lead on the design, hired a consultant, got through all that, got through all the CDOT permitting, and have since bid the project. And so now we're at the kickoff phase of construction. They received the county two bids for the construction of that project, one for Mountain Valley, eight ninety-six, the other for Morton Electric for one point two seven million. The low bid was a complete bid. So they've, our county staff has made a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and then they approved that contract for the eight ninety-six. So, again, we're not, we don't have to enter into a contract because we're just a financial partner through the IGA. And we don't have to approve the expenditure because the IGA was essentially authorized the expenditures. So the, we all thought it was going to be really long lead issues, our long lead time issues on a lot of the, because it's like, got electronics and circuit boards in it. Turns out, it's looking a little more favorable. There is a chance the project may be done by the end of this year, if follow the stars align. They contractually have until, or end of the second quarter of next year, because a lot of that's uncertain. So if some of those lead time issues do come up, they would probably do a lot of the groundwork now, get that done, and then just wait for the equipment to show up, and then they'd be plopping that in when it shows up in the spring. But in a perfect world, to follow the stars align, the work will be done this, by the end of this year. During the work, there won't be any closures of Chapeeta or Townsend. You might see lane shifts or lane closures, but that's about the extent of the impact since most of the work is along the shoulder. Taking that eight sixty, eight ninety-six, split to forty percent, so that makes our share three fifty-eight, as you get down into the financials of that. We didn't know how it was going to split between the years, and so we do have budget in this year's budget. We also have some in next year, just as a placeholder, not knowing if it'll carry over or not. But at the end of the day, whatever, whichever money you budget in, if we don't, whatever doesn't get used, just stays unexpended, so. And then I did include an attachment with an overview to help people visualize what this will look like. I'll zoom in on the intersection here. So if you remember, it was probably four or five years ago, CDOT, this used to be two-lane through on the northbound side. CDOT did a channelizing project to try and create an acceleration lane for those turning left out of Chapeeta. This little job here, that was, that was in response to some of the safety issues and access issues and capacity issues they had without the signal. Now, the signal would be in here, they can go back to the full two-lane northbound configuration, which is advantage for those, you know, the channelizing worked really well for the Chapeeta intersection, the safety of the Chapeeta intersection. It packed those people into one lane, so it made getting out of some of the places to the south a little harder, now that those, that traffic will be a little more spread out between the two lanes. Should actually see improvement south of the intersection area for people getting onto the highway, and then obviously just more storage and kind of making your presence known as you get into town. But pretty mild project, reworking some of those medians here on the Chapeeta side. This is built so that when the bridge is widened in the future, because that bridge was built to be able to just be added onto in the future as capacity and development pushes towards the south, those lanes can be added without having to redo the signal. So it's meant to kind of allow room for growth. Another one of the unique features of this signal is it's called dilemma detection. And so they kind of gone away, so a lace is a good example, when you see the flashing when it's about to turn yellow, and then people have a choice, either gun it, thinking they're going to shoot the gap, and then they end up skidding into the intersection, not from experience or anything. They've found a better way to do it is, it's called dilemma detection. So these things have cameras on them that read ahead and look for the gap to actually make the signal change when there's a gap, so that you don't have people that are left in that, oh, do I go, don't go, kind of dilemma, because that's, especially the first intersection coming into town, those are, you know, real safety issues. And then we get questions a lot about reducing the speed limit concurrent with this project. CDOT will reevaluate the speed limits, they have a whole process for that, because this is a state highway, where they do various speed studies. Once the signal's in place, they will do that, and then look at if it warrants bringing the speed limit down between, either on the signal approach or between the signal and the next signal, which is Oxbow. With that, happy to answer any questions.
I'm really excited, because in our original estimation of what the cost is going to be, this is significantly lower than what we had originally mentally budgeted for this project. So that's pretty exciting for me, that we've actually come in under where we expected.
Yeah, it's rare this, in this day and age especially. I think we figured it would cost overall between design and construction about one point five, and I think the IGA went to two, just so we went to go back to the well, create an umbrella, knowing that we'd only spend what was used. And so, yeah, even that one point five, we're collectively about four hundred thousand of that, so.
I have a question. I understand how we're paying forty, and they're the lead, and you're giving us this information, but beyond you being the information bringer to council, are you involved at all with the county? Like, how much time is this project taking?
Not much at all. They've kind of taken the lion's share. So we've reviewed the plans, just to make sure that, you know, because we hear from our constituents different things than they may be hearing from theirs, to make sure those elements are incorporated. Our time commitment is, I mean, I got maybe twenty hours into it as well.
Okay.
Not, not much at all.
Okay.
And they kind of wrote, they write their contracts, putting a lot more of the management, so on the contractors, so the contractor's responsible for a lot of the day-to-day outreach interactions, and they have a public information officer and things of that sort. And so it should be pretty light on both of us, the way they set that up.
Cool. Thanks.
So our upcoming signalization at the airport is going to follow this basically the same model?
Yeah, so I think verbally, there isn't an IGA in place for that one, but verbally, we've talked about in, as a partnership towards the terminal expansion project, and what that does for us and our community and tourism and business and things of that sort, contributing financially towards that. They're quite a ways out, they've just started on design, unfortunately. There's railroad, they got to get through and stuff too, so I wouldn't expect to see that one for a couple of years, but in, right now, as it sits, we would, we're planning to follow a similar model, where that would be the lead, because it's, it's there, prompted by their project in the airport there, and we would be a financial partner.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Scott? All right, moving on to item B, the West Main Revitalization Traffic Study Results and Public Outreach. Again, Scott Murphy.
Thank you. So this one, if you remember, we got two million dollars from CDOT. There's no packet materials to go with this, so I'll go Bill style and just go, or see if I can go, make it up as I go, not make it up as I go along. Make it smooth and congruent as I go along.
Creatively adapt.
I painted myself in a corner. What else do you say?
Adapt and overcome.
Just stop. Just stop. You know what I mean. I respect your ability to always.
Hey, 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 don't stop digging. Just stop digging.
Just stop.
All right. Let me talk about roads again. All right. So I've got two million dollars from CDOT as part of the revitalization, or revitalizing Main Streets grant. The primary goals of that project were to really make West Main more of a Main Street, and make it safe for pedestrians and multimodals. So improving the sidewalks, improving the ADA access, right now, you could not get a wheelchair. If you wanted to get from Townsend to West Main Trail, you could not get through there on a wheelchair, due to cross slope issues, driveway issues, gravels, things of that sort. So widening the sidewalks, creating more of a entrance to the city, kind of just letting people know that you are in downtown, making it not totally motor-focused, but including, you know, obviously pedestrians and bikes, and then improving the aesthetics of the area to just improve the look and feel, and create more of a vibrant kind of business atmosphere for businesses on West Main, because it is still part of our kind of West Main commercial core. You know, prompt even more as we see continued use of West Main and the West Main Trailhead, the Unco-pagory Railway Trail, all these things that drive, you know, just more need for connectivity between those recreational assets and, you know, our commercial core as well. So we got two million dollars to go towards that. The city would be contributing five hundred thousand additional, plus some of our model line replacements and stuff that'll be coming up on the project. So ends up being a pretty substantial, you know, three million-ish project by the time it's all said and done. We've been working on design. The first part of that were our traffic studies, to really understand what would be possible from a traffic standpoint. We've gotten to the end of those, so I wanted to fold you guys in on what, what we're finding, and then kind of talk through our next steps on the product as we progress towards design and outreach to the community with it. So, you know, intersection, our capacities of, traffic capacity of a corridor is driven by the intersections primarily. You know, you can, you know, there's talk of road diets and going down to three lanes and stuff, and that's usually doable in between the intersections, but at the intersections themselves, and if you have to be a traffic engineer, sit and watch how many cars need to stack behind an intersection while waiting to get through it, and then how many turn lanes you need to get that to drain quickly enough to then clear before the next, you switch over and the next lane goes. So it's really the intersections that drive the decisions of what we can and can't do. We were looking at going to a three-lane configuration through the corridor to see if that would work, so, you know, your standard road diet where you take away a through lane and replace that with, you know, bull box and landscaping and bike lanes. Delta's a great example. They just did that through their downtown core. They used to have two through lanes in each direction. Now everything south of the major interchange there has gone to one lane in each direction, and they've changed that over to more, a bike lane and more parklets and things of that sort along their downtown core. So it's kind of along the same ideas, though you notice they do that through all the regular typical intersections, but once they get to the main interchange there in town, it's back to its old standard template, because they need all those lanes and all that storage to make that intersection work, especially into the long term. Pretty similar deal here. So we looked at modeling the road diet throughout the whole corridor, and it just plain doesn't work from a volume standpoint. We project volume growth on both West Main and then more so on Grand. So Grand, long range, you know, as Colorado Outdoors continues to build out, and then once Grand punches through down by, down to River Landing by Target, you know, it'll be a pretty significant alternate route to Townsend. And you could see, you know, what you're more or less kind of used to on Townsend volumes, Grand approaching those. I don't think they'd ever be as high as Townsend, but a lot of volume on, on Grand going into the future. And so that interchange of West Main and Grand becomes really important. You don't want that to turn into gridlock. So, you know, if we could do road diet between, and similar deal for Townsend, you know, Townsend and Main is always going to be a really high-capacity intersection. And so there's not many blocks between Townsend and Main, so if you neck down to a three and then just, just to neck back out again, didn't really make sense. And so we are looking to keep the full lane configurations in between Townsend and Grand. But the good news is, once you do get west of Grand, it's going down to a three lane anyway. You know, you're, by the time you're getting to Chapeeta here, you still have this left turn lane, but for the most part, you're one lane in each direction. And so because there aren't a lot of traffic loading west of Grand, we can do that earlier, so we'll still have all the storage and all the lanes at Grand Avenue here, and then neck down to a typical divided center turn lane, through lane each direction, bike lanes, all that, west of Grand. And that gives us the opportunities for a lot more of a city feel, not really impacting the volume we're thorough put by any means. Then you also have the ability to do decorative medians and things of that sort. Between Grand and Townsend, we still do have opportunities to implement the, the goals of the project. So through here, there's not a lot of on-street parking demand. There's one business that's kind of reliant on it, we're able to maintain that, but for the most part, we are able to sacrifice that on-street parking for widened sidewalks, a boulevard, and bike lanes. And so we're trying to get our cake and eat it too, so looking at what's the best use of that pavement. You know, going through, there's really almost, yeah, maybe seen one stray car parked on the side streets here, so. And all the businesses along there have options for parking on the side streets, aren't reliant on the on-street parking on Townsend, or on Main Street anyway. So we are looking at, in that reach, changing the on-street parking for bike lanes and sidewalks. That allows us to do everything from Sealeague, and this is, so we're only talking up to Sealeague in this case. Everything east of Sealeague would all remain the same, because it's more or less already streetscaped and kind of already has the downtown feel. So from Sealeague going west, we would implement all new widened sidewalks, pushed-out curb lines, decorative paving, our decorative kind of boulevard strip, streetscaping, bike lane, and then all of the lanes that you currently see today, albeit a little bit narrower. And I'll talk about that in a second. So, and that's pretty realistic with the budget as well. You know, it's a pretty long stretch, and so that in itself would likely use up the budget. So we're kind of setting this up to accomplish the goals and then set ourselves up for the future too. So if we needed to add, you know, budget-wise, wanted to add more decorative landscaping in the, in the medians and stuff in the future, we'd have stub outs to do that, and those can be follow-up projects to just continue to improve West Main. So this, this grant kind of becomes, creates a framework for all of that, jumpstarts it. So we're looking, the next step in this, we're looking to do targeted outreach to all the businesses and some public open houses. So we'll get those scheduled. We hope to meet with every single business owner along there individually, to kind of get their take on how they feel about how it lays out, and if there's things they want to tweak and give feedback on. Kind of the big things we'll be looking for from the public, the traffic is, kind of is what it is. You know, if it's not going to work, it's not going to work. We can't reduce the lanes, especially with it being a CDOT highway. But we do still need feedback on the landscaping elements, how we make it pretty, all the streetscaping, and then we also like feedback on lane widths too. So we are at a point where we can, you know, make the lanes narrower, so eleven feet's about the smallest we would go. If you drove through Delta before their recent road diet, they were eleven feet, so you kind of have a feel for how tight that feels, but without on-street parking may not be the worst either. So what the narrower lanes give us is more boulevards, you have more room for, you know, pedestrian activities on the side, if businesses want to have little seating areas, or more landscaping to kind of create the trade-off between vehicle and landscaping. We can do the typical twelve-foot lanes, or even eleven and a half, and we would just have less boulevard to work with, and it'd be kind of a less, it'd be just a little strip, you know, maybe a two-foot strip or something each side, so.
How does that impact bike lanes, the difference between eleven, eleven and a half, and twelve?
So we would set the bike lanes to a six-foot minimum. Typically, ours are five. We're looking at six on this to kind of create a little bit of a, we'd have a painted buffer strip between them, because it's a higher volume, it's a major arterial roadway, so it'd just take it to a little higher degree. So the bike lane fits kind of either way. That could be reduced to five, and that's another kind of piece of feedback we would like to get, of whether they'd see, rather see a thicker bike lane, or, you know, six or five would be the two options there. This is always kind of craning off the different.
Sure. I guess the one thing I wouldn't want to see is the lane reduced to a ten-foot lane and a five-foot bike lane. That just seems like now you've got too mu, you know, too.
Yeah, we would never go below eleven, and CDOT won't let us go below eleven.
Oh, okay.
On, on the main thoroughfare. So typical, when we do, so if you drive any of our minor arterials, they're eleven-point-six-seven, I believe.
Okay.
Just to give you a kind of point of reference, and that, you know, they don't feel terribly tight. And you don't want them too wide, because then they feel too wide and people drive faster, you know?
Right.
So the sweet spot is between eleven and twelve.
Okay, so I guess if I, if we're going to go more towards eleven than twelve, I wouldn't then want to see bike lanes that are five instead of six.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so you, yeah, you won't want to go thin on everything.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Pinch ourselves in. Yep, totally. That's great feedback.
I think one of the things that you keep mentioning, and I want to make sure that the public is really cognizant of, is that this is a CDOT highway, and that we have input, but we do not have control.
Yep.
So that when we can, we can ask them, hey, would this work? And they can come back and say, no.
Yep. Yeah, so they'll be, you know, through the, because through the grant, they're, you know, all of their departments end up reviewing and approving everything we're doing, so we've kept them in the loop as we go along to make sure we don't, you know, grossly go down a dead-end road and waste time of something we know that may be dead on arrival. But generally, they're on board with where this is headed. They were open to the eleven-foot lanes in general, given that they're, you know, like I said, Delta had them for decades. They're a little uncomfortable with on-street parking, but this one have the on-street parking, so would be pretty, still remain pretty comfortable.
And when you say uncomfortable, I, I get what you mean, when you're driving and it's narrow, but wouldn't that have a natural inclination to slow traffic down?
Absolutely, yep. And that's the trade-off, and that's why the, a lot of people do them in the urban cores. You want it to, yeah, so I say uncomfortable, not like bad uncomfortable, just you want it to be, kind of put you on alert to a little degree that you're paying attention, maybe noticing a business or two and stopping, you know, but just aware that this is a urban corridor and to keep you out for pedestrians and children and things of that sort, so. Yeah, there's definitely science behind that.
And I'd lean, I would lean towards an eleven-foot wide lane and a wider sidewalk.
Great, yep.
One other question I have is signalization on crosswalks. Are we going to utilize our flashing signals for crosswalks on this section?
So we added them at Unco-pagory and Sealeague a couple of years ago. That, where that's the hardcore, I don't think we'll have any additional crosswalks, it'll be added. I'm trying to look here, I think, yeah, because Sealeague has one. So I, kind of, when we're doing these pedestrian products, if there are major crosswalks, we do, but this doesn't, I don't think will have any new crosswalks. Or even major crosswalks, we're kind of getting out of that urban core. I think if, as businesses develop and there's the talk of adding one, you know, you'd probably do little bull out type things, and you could have a follow-up crosswalk project in that case. But right now, there's not, all the loading would drive to the existing flashing crosswalks or Grand Avenue, which would be signal-protected for a lot of the pedestrian activity.
So we don't see a lot of pedestrian traffic crossing between Grand and the West Main Trailhead?
Correct, yep. We want them to go down, and that was, you know, one of the drivers for the project is, and we have access down on both sides to utilize the underpass for that purpose, because I remember trying to cross there, because they're, none of those intersections are controlled with stop signs or signals or anything, and so it's really uncomfortable to, even with a flashing one, would be pretty uncomfortable to cross. Bad uncomfortable.
Bad, bad. He's got, on that, one more time, the two million dollars worth that coming from?
Colorado Department of Transportation.
Okay.
And it's, it's state dollars, not federal, which is awesome. So that's when the director, Shoshana Lou, came out, and it was like, you guys really should go after this. This is a lot easier money to use than the typical federal CDOT money, so it doesn't have a lot of the Davis Bacon and Buy America stuff that can really bog down and drive up costs on some of the federal projects. So it's, it's straight state money through the revitalizing Main Streets program. And, yeah, we got two bucks, which is a pretty substantial award for that program.
One more question. Is there any plans, do we have for revitalizing east part of Main Street? I know a few people out there had asked me if there was anything the city had planned for there.
Right now, we don't have any immediate capital plans. We, we want to revitalize every street in town eventually. So I think it kind of comes down to prioritization and bang for the buck, and, you know, I think as we, there will, at some point in my career, likely be a complete revitalization of, you know, standard Main Streets, so at least up to Junction. And then whether we start extending beyond that, you know, it's kind of a capital and council directive and community priorities and those standard things, and money, you know. Main Streets are really expensive, just given the width, and it's got a lot of challenges with utilities, and it has an old concrete layer underneath, it's, everything you do is, three times as hard, and things of that sort, so.
But from Townsend east is no longer, up to the bypass in San Juan is no longer a state highway.
Correct, yep.
So we have a little bit more flexibility on utilizing some of the, but the drawback is that we probably wouldn't have CDOT funds in the same way available as we do for the West Main.
I think that helped here, yep, because it's helping their infrastructure as well as ours, because, yeah, Townsend to San Juan is straight, city-owned, city-controlled.
In order to access the trail underneath West Main, it seems like there could be slightly better access on the north side, because right now, isn't there like just a dirt slope?
Yep, yeah.
Could we look at making that better?
Totally, yeah. That was, we did spend a lot of hard dollars on that. To get the ADA grades right, would have been about, oh, another hundred and fifty grand on top of that project, because it was, yeah, right now, it's, it's, a lot of people use it, but the formal ADA access is on the south side with retaining walls and everything. We didn't want to, knowing that, what, what that, not knowing what that lot was going to be on the northern side, we felt that that would have been the best time to upgrade that access, because it may, may, you know, we thought maybe it'd become a public-private partnership and that would become a business, or that may become, depending on the loading at West Main, if it becomes overburdened and just outgrows itself, we would need an additional trailhead parking on the north side.
Okay.
And so when you develop that parking lot, that's when you could integrate the things. We want to put something in just to take it out within five years or something.
Got it. That's a, that's a great answer I can pass on to the people who've asked me, why don't we make that better? Because the city owns that, a parcel or two right there.
Yep, yeah, so when we put the connect trail through, we purchased, there's an old house, dilapidated house on there, so we purchased the parcel, demoed the house, and so now there is some usable land left on those parcels on the north side.
And it sounds like what you're saying is, in some ways, we're retaining those for a possible trailhead extension.
Yep, yep.
Like, we're not looking for an active buyer?
Not currently, no. The most likely use is an expansion of the West Main Trailhead, because it, I mean, West Main, it's.
It's popular.
Yeah, it's a very popular parking place, so. So that's, that's its most likely future.
Thanks.
Again, that would be council-led, as far as what we decide to do with that and budget, would have to calculate that into the budget at some point.
Totally, yep.
To make sure we have adequate funding for that.
So next piece on this product, you can expect to see, we're, again, going door-to-door and trying to set up meetings with the business owners and just make them aware of the project and, and get their feedback, and then you'll see some open houses advertised. We're going to try and, you know, do midday ones, afternoon ones, we'll do a couple, just to try and make sure we can capture various people's schedules, because we would, there's a lot of great choices to make as far as how we make this thing look, so we would love the public's feedbacks.
Can you get all of those on our calendar?
Yeah, yep, certainly.
Our shared council calendar?
Yep.
That'd be great.
How soon are you anticipating starting these?
So, yeah, it's a great question. So the construction, it's, the open houses will be, probably schedule them within the next month and a half is kind of the tentative goal, and get those, get through those, and then with that, we would go towards, working towards final design. The product itself, you know, there's a lot of clearances we got to get from CDOT, from utilities and archaeological and historical and right-of-way and railroad, you know, all these things. Those, those take time, and that's, you know, just part of being a grant project. So we're tentatively scheduled to break ground on the utility replacements portion of this job, so just like Townsend, you know, we have a lot of old AC, undersized asbestos cement water lines within West Main that we would have as a standalone city project ahead of time, to get those done in the winter, starting winter of 2023, and then get those done through the winter, and then kind of come into paving and sidewalk work in the spring of 2024. And that's all pending, you know, all the CDOT approvals and everything, so that's the wild card on those, but.
So we're at least a year out from people seeing actual construction on this project.
Yep.
Plenty of time for input, plenty of time for feedback.
Totally, yep.
Very good. Are there any other questions for Scott on that item? Excellent, thank you. That's a great update. Moving on to our final item, item C, special events alcohol permit for dinner on Main event. And this is City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you. I think we received an application from the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club for a special events permit for the dinner on Main event on September 24th. The event will close Main Street, the 500 block from Unco-pagory to Park. And as you're all aware, anytime we close a street and issue an alcohol permit, who needs to be council approval? So if council agrees, we could put this, oh, I'm so sorry. If council agrees, we could put this on the consent agenda for the September 20th meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Perfect. All right, general city council discussion. Are there any items from city council?
I keep meaning to ask David Bries a question. When it comes to painting the fire hydrants, I know you have trouble finding someone to do the work. I'm wondering if that's a project that's easy enough that we could perhaps work with community options and their adult workers on that? And, and maybe it's way more complicated than I could imagine, but since I personally keep thinking about spray painting mine, I joke with you about that. I'm not really. I just wonder if that wouldn't be something we could partner with community options to do?
Yeah, I've been, is this on? Okay. I've been looking and trying to find alternate contractors to do it. One of the concerns for most of the contractors is a lot of the paints that are more durable and hold up to the ultraviolet light and the fading and the chalking out that we currently are experiencing are a two-part epoxy that have a pot life that's fairly, fairly short. And so that's part of what's driving it is mixing the right amount of paint to where you can get it done as well as the surface prep in order to where it sticks and adheres and it lasts. I think these higher-quality paints are going to increase the cost to do it, but I think will also increase the longevity of the hydrants as far as frequency of painting. So I think it's, I've got a contractor out of Grand Junction that actually works down with the wastewater treatment plant and has done some lining of the clarifiers down there, WBS coating, are supposed to be getting me a proposal to get some of those done, at least 100, 150 hydrants yet this year and stuff. So I'm pushing on it and, and I'm hoping that, I've, I've reached out to several of the local painting contractors and all of them have really said they really don't delve into that. They're looking more for larger surface areas and where they're set up for.
Right. That's kind of why I was wondering if it was a small project and that was part of the reason you were having trouble, if it might be an appropriate project for community options. But it sounds like the paint might be so specialized that it's a small project, but with specialized paint, which is a pretty tricky niche.
Yeah, because some of the, the VOC regulations of the state that implemented about three or four years ago really restrict the types of paint that can be used on that to, with the durability and some of those has created some, some of those challenges.
Well, thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Any other city council comments or questions or juggling acts? No? Okay. Any staff comments?
C dot's done. C dot's done with their overlay.
Really? Because I see all these areas that are marked up with white, like they need to be finished.
They, there's a story there, yeah. So that was a product of their profiler graph. I'll go into that story. They are doing a little bit of cleanup, so some shouldering, a couple more manholes, I think, to finish resetting. We had a lot of the manhole work we were going to do, they ended up, they had to take them out, do their milling anyway. So we've been working with them on the nights to put it all back, which they're doing at their cost, which is great. So, yeah, I think outside of some minor cleanup work, they're more or less done, done. A lot of those white marks you see, so they, after, on highway jobs, when they finish a pave, they do a profiler graph, which is a laser reader that runs down the street and can look for inconsistencies in the, in the grade. It picks up a lot of things that may or may not actually need to be remedied or corrected. So they go out, they run the profiler graph, it, the computer spits out all the areas that it thinks need to be hit and then they'll go out and actually, you know, string them and evaluate each one. So those were areas, they ended up, yeah, I think maybe 10% or so of those end up actually needing attention. That's just where they go through and they use a diamond smooth grinder.